Okay, it is October 21st, 2024, 10 o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Roll call, smiley.
Here.
Starts.
Here.
Nick Murphy, come here. Number four, approval of the minutes of the last meeting, October 7th, 2024. In addition to corrections, see base season. Two minutes.
One second.
On favor. Okay, number five, discussion and possible action regarding the pop-out grant out of retail committee holder drug. Sally, you up?
I guess. So, what do you want me to say to you?
Don't do without it.
I wanted to say to get music around the square.
Oh, okay.
And we had it, you know, years ago. And, um, and, um, we just wanna get it. We just really need permission from you guys. And I mean, if you wanna donate, that's wonderful. But we've, we've gotten a couple of grants, not big grants, but, you know, and then we're getting donations from...
From anybody.
Yeah.
The largest component right now, both terms of the grant are written in that packet that I gave you guys, and we have to have approval from the property owner.
Which we just...
Due to where we were wanting to put it on the west end over here by the stage. That's county-owned property, and so we have to have approval to be able to move forward with the grant side of it. And then, yes, ultimately, once we get all the funds to be able to completely move forward, we would install.
Okay.
Install there. There's a tentative budget on the back of that, depending on where some of the funds come in from people. If we end up with more, maybe we could try to go a little bit bigger. Or that, I think, is overstated in some capacity, that it could be less than that as well. And the grant awarded us 10% of our, of our project cost that we submitted to them, which was that proposed budget there.
But just out of the grant, obviously, who's gonna be getting the grant from?
It was a pop-out grant. I need to do a little bit more research on where that actually was. It circled around on Facebook. We shared it through the chamber. I shared it with a lot of business owners here. And it was for retailers, theoretically, up to $1,500 with a no match. And so we applied for this through Holder Drug onto Alba Retail Committee is how that will pass through. Sally wanted to see...
Because we, well, I wanted, but not, you know, not just for Holder Drug.
A retail company.
We just had a name on it.
A retail business had to be the applicants.
Uh huh.
But Sally, the one this week, that as part of being an awardee, you get a lot of other privileges with it as well. So it'll be really great for our retail committee as a whole.
Yeah, good ideas for our committee.
Well, I'm all good with it. I just, I have one question, maybe double question. It has on this budget, tax.
For the wires, to buy the wiring, to buy the mounts and the hardware, and to buy the actual equipment was the tax. It was itemized out on the budget that we had to see.
Oh, it's a tax you're gonna have to pay?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
On the, on the goods to purchase them.
All right, okay.
I R C I, that's who gives it out.
Yeah, can you remember what that says for?
No, I should have.
Independent Retail Committee.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks.
I'm glad it was written out that way. There you go.
I mean, I was just, I was a little worried it was to stay there.
One of the emails came from that, and I'm like, honey, it's...
Oh, lady that's working with us, so she's been awesome.
I'm all for letting her have it.
Yeah, not a motion, that's what?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll say. All favor.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, do we need to sign part of this?
No, we will have to have something from you, like a letterhead or something that will show. I think it showed, says in here somewhere.
Does it kinda say what we need to put in the letterhead?
Yeah, I think, I think it said that. We needed a, and if it's not on this page, I'll get the correct page to you, Shelley, that shows, you're required to obtain proper permission from property owners in any other entity relative to the scope of the project. So I think that's, that's really what we need, just saying that we have approval.
All of which.
Okay.
And, and we told them that we had to do some fundraising, so you could say approval upon, you know, fundraising or...
Right.
Project, um, funding available, whatever it may need to be. But we will have to have that to apply for the first half that they will give us on the front end of the project.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Good luck with that.
Thanks.
Okay. So that's got that in form of motion, and we'll have to have that letter to sign.
Yeah.
And if we just have a little action on it, is there, I mean, just... Yeah, we need to approve it.
Yeah, that's it.
And then later, that's the...
Yeah, yeah, and I'll put it on the next agenda, whatever.
Okay, number six, discussion, possible action regarding fiscal year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant Application.
So this is just the 24 fiscal year, uh, Emergency Management Performance Grant Application. It's federal grant, passed through by State Emergency Management. Uh, it's been $20,000 and passed. It's not an agreement, so there's not a list price on it, so I'm not sure. They've had some funding changes here lately, so I think it's gonna stay the same, but it could drop some. But from my understanding, it'll still be $20,000. And everything on the program's pretty much stayed the same as it's been in the past.
We're asking for 20, and if you don't...
Well, it's, they, they just, they have kind of a set program that they, they start out at five, and then, yeah, they, they give you so much money. But it's been $20,000 for several years.
Okay. They got a motion, Jeff.
I got a motion.
One second.
All favor.
Aye.
There's several. I'll, I'll label everything on it. Okay. There's that one that you'll just sign next to that. Just next to where it's written. Shelley, it's on the right.
You sign it in the stamp?
Number missing.
Oh, you'll authorize it?
We can get it later.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up.
Okay.
I'm not... Thank you. Lot of work. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, discussion, possible action regarding resolution approving inter-local cooperative agreement, appointing county representative to CD board of directors, and authorizing representative to sign inter-local cooperative agreement.
They've kinda lumped that all into one contract now instead of the one resolution.
Okay, I wonder, the signature part on there, is that you need to be me or the new?
No, I think it needs to be you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it says chairman.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll move on to the representative. What do you think?
With everything with me signed up in there like it is, I'd like maybe see if Shane would be interested in being a representative.
I think that would be good. I think that's a good learning.
You can thank me later.
I'll do it.
Is that a motion?
I'll take that motion.
I'll second. All favor. Aye. And I guess that's authorizing representative to sign inter-local cooperative agreement would be... Do you think that's me, the current representative for now?
I think so.
Okay.
But I don't...
Can you word it like that, that, that Randy's our representative until Shane takes over, or?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, he can do it till the end of the year, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then Shane gets sworn in and...
I wish they'd tell, you know, when they send this stuff, they'd tell us a little bit more about what they're wanting. Okay, so it's resolved, I can't...
Well, can't we just state it in our minutes like that? Being it's kinda open, doesn't really give a date.
Well, I, this is for the future.
Yeah, I mean, the program is till the end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the, uh, we're good to have him...
Could now just put like a...
Have him sign it for future for, I think, I don't think this interlocal agreement will go into effect until the first year.
Right.
So I think that he might as well come and sign it.
Okay, and then we need to also appoint an alternate and a second alternate. So how do you want that to read? You know, it's gonna be first.
David.
I second that. Tell you what we might do on that signature deal, is Shane and I might both sign it.
And basis kicker, no?
There, hey, that's a good idea.
Well, cause there might be some kind of red tape, beans, he's not sworn in yet, or...
Right, right, exactly.
You know, that kinda...
This is unknown and gonna change first of the year. This is the only one. The only one.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, we'll just have him sign under.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Number eight, discussion, possible action regarding the senior citizen project. We have, and I haven't talked to since, we have the, that's here.
Oh, there's, there's... Is this your new...
This, this is the composed by the architect, but there was, I talked to Monty and Edith. They were supposed to meet with Roy last Wednesday or Thursday, and they wanted to make some changes. And I don't know how that turned out, but this is for the Alba. They wanted, they told me they thought that the, the bathrooms were too, uh, too much stuff in there, more than needed, and that they ought to be, it ought to be closer down there to the, to the kitchen, and didn't think that they had to have the, the entrance right in the middle of the building if that caused an issue. And, and they didn't know why such a, a large mechanical room. So that was things they were gonna discuss with Roy. And I don't know how that went, but, you know, I, I liked their idea of it.
Is it big enough for them though?
Well, yeah, I mean, we updated that, those, that square footage, uh, and, and I'm in agreement with them, that kinda takes away from the square footage. And it'd be better if those bathrooms were down there by the kitchen somewhere, keep the plumbing and...
Yeah.
And stuff closer together, wiring, the whole nine yards.
Well, five sinks and... Little overkill, maybe, I don't know.
Well, that's what they thought.
Three on one and two on the other.
They, they felt like that it was overkill and that they didn't need that much. And I don't know, I don't know the regulations or anything for something like that, and...
Compliance to be...
And I was just gonna let them, I mean, they're talking about, as far as I'm concerned, cost savings on the deal, they're downsizing it, so...
Well, that's, that's something I didn't, you know, I met with him down there to look over the Winoka project.
Right.
He's telling me we're gonna have to redo the electric because it's commercial, it has to be in conduit, uh, which adds to cost and, uh, do this, do that, do that. I know we're going off of his, uh, ideas, but doesn't he make more money the more we spend? That's kinda like asking the fox to...
Oh, yeah, but it'll be... It'll be, but it wouldn't surprise me that that conduit part is mandatory.
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah, but the other parts, you know...
Some other things that he suggested, you know, uh, stuff that looks like it's fine to me. Well, they tear it out and put all new in, you know, I just, I don't know. Kinda like this.
Yeah.
You know, do they need a big mechanical room or free...
Do you have a rep down there from the senior citizens?
They're kinda, I'll tell you later.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, that's, uh, that's kinda how I left this deal.
They did have one, but I don't know if they do now.
I left this deal for those to have their input, cause I don't wanna do any of this stuff and everybody be unhappy right off the get-go.
Yeah.
You know? And especially when it appears to me what they're wanting is, is cost savings anyhow. So, but I didn't hear back from anybody, I'm not even sure they had to meet.
I talked to him Thursday, and he was gonna come up here and, and meet the lady about the kitchen stuff, and that was the last I talked to.
Yeah, and, and I hadn't heard, but he was gonna contact Monty and Edith and, and set up a time to meet with them, and I didn't hear after that.
But that is, I think we probably ought to do that, let, let some of, maybe not too many.
Right.
You get too carried away, and then you got...
Well...
But listen to their ideas that...
My suggestion is, is that they get around and appoint somebody, one or three.
Yeah.
You know, that they can make some decisions.
And look at this and, and draw it, and we can take it back to Roy and get it all jiving.
Yeah, I'm, we're talking about whatever.
Both, really?
Yeah, well, they, they kinda are that without, with meeting with those two.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think maybe with...
But the same thing needs to happen down there.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at.
I can, I can, I can have that done.
I don't know, is that, we've got discussion, possible action, okay. Maybe we need a motion to, to request that those, the senior citizens...
I'll make a motion that each, each, uh, senior citizen has its own representative...
There you go.
To bring information back to us.
Or go over with architect.
An in-between person, representative, however you wanna call it.
No, I think that's, that's...
Now, do we pick them, or do they pick them, or do senior citizens kinda come up and say, hey, this is our person?
I think that letting them do that is the thing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so each senior citizen has their own representative?
To bring back information to us and architects.
Okay, got it.
That's a motion and a second. Aye. All favor.
Aye.
Okay, there's only one other thing on that. Did you look, is that money supposed to be, what we talked about, either encumbered or appropriated?
I think it's supposed to be obligated.
Obligated, that's what I'm...
But, um, let me make a hundred percent sure, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's just obligated by December.
Okay.
I hope so.
Well, I think we'll make it, I mean, these, for the, the Alba one, I mean, there's ample time...
Right.
For them to make the changes or suggestions and...
And get it.
Something and get out for bids.
Yeah.
Do it as fast as they're moving on this.
Yes.
You know, I think we can do either. I was just curious, which one had to be happened. And so, okay. All right, number nine, discussion, possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway D1 SERB to Highway D1 Personal Services in an amount of $16,545.98, and the D2 SERB to D2 Personal Services in an amount of $16,545.97.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 10, discussion, possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn for NWOSU rodeo on the square on October 30th, 2024. I guess it'll be just like they always do, and so they bring the kids down here.
Dance.
Yeah.
Having some kind of little dance or...
Oh, no, they, they have stuff down here, and they bring kids from the grade schools down here. They let them rock a dummy and, yeah.
So lived.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
It's not literally a rodeo on the square, but it's kinda playing like it.
Okay, number 11, discussion, possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn for the Minister Alliance Prayer on the Square on November 4th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All favor? Is that, that's like right before the election.
Yeah, that's why they're, that's why they're doing it.
Double pray, huh? Kind of like the fire department.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, number 12, discussion, possible action regarding the requisition for the free, free games and awards account purchases over 500. And I did, I think what this means, and I think it was actually, it was intended to be this way. Anytime there's purchases over 500, it needs to go through this board. Is that right?
Well, once, right, that is true, but Rachel, when she took, had, you know, when she was assigned to take that over... She has her, um, procedures set in place that they know about, and this is part of it.
But, but essentially, that's what it amounts to.
Yeah.
Any purchases over 500 need to, need to come through here prior to...
So with...
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She just wants to make sure everybody's aware.
I think it's been like that, but I don't know about the therapy. I don't know how they talk to her.
It's been, but I don't know.
Disgusted fox members and stuff, didn't we?
Yeah. Okay, number 13, discussion, possible action regarding REIT grant application for Woods County Real Water District REIT.
Yes, and they are looking at painting three of their water towers, and, um, their total project cost is $94,000, they're asking REIT for $75,000, local contribution is $19,000. So...
So moved.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mm-hmm, I think so.
Okay, number 14, discussion, possible action regarding the REIT grant application for Winoka Park Park.
So Winoka is looking at buying a Ken, Kenham 2024 Defender Max DPS HD10 with Great Line Transport Deluxe and likes.
They're wanting to buy a doom buggy to go out there and, and pick up people at that American Oasis. And I just, I don't like the sound of any of it.
Ability to go on a little...
The state park brings the patient out to us. Ben Davis probably ought to do that too. What's the legality of putting volunteer firemen in a doom buggy to pick up somebody? I don't know if they're gonna use it to go pick up patients?
Well, it says...
Or just basically use it to get out there to help with food? I haven't got enough information out of them, but it seems like we're...
Well, it says that they're wanting to go out in Sahara State Park for rescue purposes.
Yeah.
Well, I know I've heard of EMTs riding on doom buggies to get two patients.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the, the state does that, you know, often.
They got, understood that.
I mean, that's how they've always done it. But we're kinda going into a little different area. I don't...
Well, I understand where you're coming from, I just, I don't know if it's, is it our call whether we, we allow them to go up for a REIT grant? Or is it, is it out there at OE that's calling?
Uh, maybe both. I mean, I...
I mean, I, I just...
I, I don't have a problem with them getting it, I just wanna make sure the right people are the ones driving it.
Well, I understand.
I know how adrenaline works and, and a doom buggy, and that ain't gonna work out.
I, I understand where you're coming from, I'm just trying to decide where the authority lies, you know? Maybe it's something without a table and, and check with Brian on them.
I don't, I don't know.
But I mean, I'm not sure if...
Whatever you guys think, cause I'm just saying my...
Well, no, and I think it's valid.
I think you've got some other stuff, Joe.
Yeah, I'm not saying that... Yeah, I'm not saying that at all.
If there's more questions answered, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but.
Well, let's just table it till we get some answer.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
On favor.
Aye.
Cause they'll have a jillion questions out there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, discussion, number 15, discussion possible action regarding the REIT grant application for our fire department, which they've asked for us to table it because they do not have all the figures.
Yes, yeah, until we get all the figures, we should have them by Thursday.
So.
We table it to Monday.
Table it and happen next Monday.
I'll make that motion too.
And that's, I guess that's how it should happen on both of those, 14 and 15.
Okay. You got a second on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, number 16, approval of county clerks designating Ashley McLinden, McLeeland?
McLeeland.
Okay, as the new purchasing agent.
I'll move.
Second.
All favor.
Got it, Daniel. I second it.
Okay. And I should've got her down here, I'll have her come down. So you guys can meet her.
Hasn't thrown her in the shower.
Okay, number 17, discussion of possible action regarding their removal, yes, of Chelsea Cummins as requisitioning officer and at Jennifer Schaefer, excuse us. I'll second. On favor.
Your second. I'm in for paper, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, number 18, new business, I think all I had's been, went over.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Take it as a no. Number 19, approved, disapproved, blank purchase.
So move. Second.
On favor. Number 20, motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion too.
I'll second.